Four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the June 24, 2020 work session of the Penfield Town Board. I'm going to officially call this meeting to order. And before I get into our roll call, and I just want to read our official notice. Due to COVID-19 virus and the closing of town operations consistent with the governor's executive orders, the June 24, 2020 work Town Board Work Session meeting is being held remotely via Zoom. This meeting will also be video recorded and broadcast live via the town's website at Penfield.org, on the town's government access cable channel 1303, and on the streaming media devices, and that's Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. If you search Penfield TV in your device's app store, this app is free. The meeting will later be transcribed, and if you have any questions regarding video coverage, please contact Penfield TV at 340-8661. Okay, with that, we will get underway with our work session. We'll let the minutes reflect that we have all board members present this evening. So we have Councilwoman Cole, Councilwoman Draw, Councilman Ockenden, and Councilman Moore. In addition to that, we have a number of staff members, our town engineer and planning director, Mark Valentine, and our development services director, Jim Costello, and of course, the person that keeps us straight through these meetings, Sue Scheit, who is our deputy town clerk. With that, you have the minutes of our last work session, the June 10, 2020 minutes before us, and would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
Mr. Supervisor, I'll move that the minutes be approved.
Second.
Thank you very much. It's been moved by Councilwoman Draw, and seconded by Councilman Ockenden. I'll ask, are there any discussions, comments regarding those minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote of approval for those minutes.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
All right, thank you. Month-to reports are all up to date. The next wave will come in at our first meeting in July, so thank you to all of the department heads. This evening, we do not have any public hearings. We do not have any guests. We're going to jump right into our action items. Our first action item is a sidewalk waiver request for Forest Ridge subdivision. And if you recall, if you tuned in at our last meeting, the board had a discussion regarding this particular item. We asked staff if they would go back and review the different options with the applicant as to their choice and how they wanted to see that sidewalk wraparound. Either way, the sidewalk was going to go in, or we would be compensated accordingly. And I'll ask at this time, Mr. Valentine, if you have an update on that matter.
Yes, thank you. I'll show my screen briefly with the group. Once that's up and invisible to the group. Look at that minute to come up, but basically, this was the discussion of the Forest Ridge development. This is at the corner of Jackson and Plank Road. Reason my screen's not popping up, but we'll talk about it anyway. The corner of Jackson and Plank was a new Forest Ridge development. This group had reviewed that last week, and as part of that, had questions about, you know, what the best waiver was for it. They had requested a one-side waiver, both on the main road and the cul-de-sac inside, as well as the waiver along the road frontages on both Jackson and Plank. We had a question about whether, the board had a question of whether it made sense to waive the portion on the cul-de-sac piece. So we'd left it to go back to the developer, talk to them, and see what their plan was. I did speak with the developer, and it was their intent to have sidewalks at least one side all the way through the development. So their preference is to have sidewalks at least on one side, including the cul-de-sac. They'd like to keep it that way, and then, you know, ask for the waiver for the remainder, the remaining portion of that. So with that, that would fall back to, they would install the sidewalks on one side internally. And I'll try to reconnect here, it's why it's not popping up. They would like to connect, you know, one side internally, and then they would pay an additional waiver fee. So the waiver fee we came up with for them using our policy, they would install the one-side sidewalk, and then they still would owe just over $78,000 is the remaining portion that would be paid per building permit. So every building permit comes in, there's 72 homes in that development, so it's just a shade over $1,000 for each building permit. They would pay that fee, same time they paid a sewer connection fee or anything else. And that money would go back into the general sidewalk fund that, you know, this board could appropriate, or appropriate at some point in the future.
Okay, so as you had laid out, the waiver would add up to $78,210.
Yes.
Is what they would be looking to give to the town. And as a reminder, that money, if we were to move forward with that, we collect that money on a per-lot basis. We would put that into our general sidewalk fund. That money would be used for sidewalks only, would not be used for anything else. And we could use it at a location where we thought it would do the best for the general population of the town. So with that, I think that was the only thing that we were waiting for. I'll ask the board, any further discussion on the Forest Ridge State's sidewalks? Or are you comfortable with moving forward with the waiver as outlined by the town engineer?
I'm in favor of moving forward, Mr. Supervisor, as proposed with the waiver.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Ockenden. Any other thoughts? I see some heads nodding that in agreement for that. Okay. All right, with that being the case, if someone might make a motion of approval for that waiver, the sidewalks will be in one side, not on both sides. The waiver amount is 78,210, and that would go into our general sidewalk fund. Would entertain a motion of approval for that.
I'll make a motion for that, Mr. Supervisor.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilman Ockenden, seconded by Councilwoman Draw. I'll ask, any other comments on this matter from the board? I'll ask the staff, is there anything that should be added to the record on this matter that we haven't already discussed either at this meeting or at our meeting two weeks ago?
No, all set.
Okay. With the motion and second, I'll ask for a roll call vote of approval.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to Item B under Action Items. This is a request for a modification of approved landscaping plan at 2567 Browncroft Boulevard. And we have the one and the only Mr. Costello here, and I see that Mary Nguyen, property owner, has joined us. Welcome, Mary.
Thank you.
And I'll ask Mr. Costello if you would give the board an update.
I would be happy to, Mr. Supervisor. Thank you. So at the last meeting on the 10th, the board asked Mary and I to again meet with the landscape consultant. That did not occur. There was a little bit of an issue that we had to deal with in terms of connecting. Well, what we did do, Mary suggested that we meet with the actual neighbors to see what their, you know, their concerns were, and we did. We met with them on the 15th, it was a Monday, had a nice conversation with them. I think, Mark, their photograph of their property from their home to Mary's home is coming up. Mary spent some time talking to them about the use of grasses on the site, which they kind of liked, but they wanted to do a little research to see if it was what was appropriate for the site. And on the 18th, I received an email from Catherine at the neighbor saying, "Good morning. After researching the pampas grass, I have some concerns. The grass is poisonous to dogs and other animals. The pampas grass is also not ideal for this planting area, so it only lasts for approximately three years." Mary has offered sweet emotion of abilia, and I've had not time to research that to see if it will grow tall and wide enough. Thank you for including us in this. And then, on Monday of this week, I did receive another email from Catherine stating, "Hello, we are not opposed to the sweet emotion of abilia. We just want to know how big they are and when they grow in. Will we be waiting three years to provide any coverage?" So Mary was good enough to provide some photographs of the abilia. The abilia is a, it's kind of like a forsythia, but it's a whitish pink flower. There are photographs coming up for you.
I'm working on it.
That grows like forsythia, gets to be about five or six feet in height. You can see from their house area, I'm sorry, if you want, I'm back to the picture. It is quite a distance from their home up to the property line. The big issue is they have their playground and they have their shed at the end of the property.
I'm getting it up on the video.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not coming up, but it is quite a distance from where they are, and they are at a grade lower than where the property line is. So I think initially, the best thing would have been to put a fence up there and called it a day, and they probably agree with that. But they are supportive of the abilia. It grows quite high, it fills in, it's a five-foot by five-foot bush when it grows. There are some photographs coming up of what it looks like, and could be in hedge form. It can also be individual, but I think Mary's intent is to plant it so that it becomes a hedge. It grows out five feet, and it grows up five feet, or six feet. And that, that should cover the situation. I did get back to her to tell her that it did all these things. I sent her the information on it. Mary was good enough to submit materials to talk about the characteristics of the plants, and I'm sure she'll talk about that in a minute. But to date, I think that's where we are right now in terms of the abilia as an option.
Okay. Mary?
Um, yes, I can barely hear you, Jim, so I'm not sure if it's, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, good.
I'm probably not close enough.
For a big guy, he has a soft voice.
So, Jim, what was your question?
Well, I didn't have a question. I was going to say, you were probably going to talk a little bit about the merits of the abilia as an option for the berm area.
Right. So the abilia is not poisonous to any animals. It's deer and rabbit resistant, which means that they don't enjoy the foliage, so they won't eat it on us. And it's fast-growing, it's easy to maintain. Jim's going to show pictures of what it looks like if it's highly trimmed, or if it's left to grow naturally. It's supposed to be trimmed after the first flowering in the spring, which is in May. And it's not supposed to be trimmed for the first three years. And I did find Bristol Gardens can order the 27 plants we need, and they would be in three-gallon containers, which means, they told me they're two years old when we get them. So that's good. So this is at least a three-year-old plant.
This is the trim for it?
And that's highly trimmed. You can see, they've really made it as a straight hedge. And what I like about it is, because our berm is six feet wide, and the plant grows to be six feet wide, if we put it in the center of, if we put it in the center of the berm, it won't be falling off the berm. And this is what it looks like if it's not trimmed, which is also very attractive.
Board, you, I'm sorry, Mary. Board, you can see that on the screen?
Yes, I can see that.
Okay. We're having a, we're having a little technical difficulties here in the, in the town hall, but Mr. Costello provided Mr. Moore and I a copy of what it looks like. So we can see it on the screen, the small screen, but we also have, we also have a copy here as well. So, I'm sorry, Mary, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. So here's another example of it not trimmed back, letting it grow naturally, which I think is attractive. I guess we'll see, because the berm is six feet wide, we could let it grow to its full natural width and height, and it would just be very attractive. They said that you could grow, you could plant it anywhere from 60 inches to 82 inches apart, but we would plant it 60 inches apart because we want it to be full border. So we're not looking for it to be clumps of plants, we're looking for it to be one full contiguous border.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you.
Those things would be very nice. It would give them, the berm is at least two feet tall, it's going to grow to six feet tall, that's going to give them eight feet, which would give them a nice amount of privacy, which the neighbor was expressing. She would enjoy when she's with her children and her swing set.
Okay. So I want to take a moment and just say thank you, Mary, for both you and Mr. Costello for taking the time to sit down with her and give her the option. And thank you for recognizing the fact that the original grasses might, while it might do the job, may have some other issues, and so thank you for going back and doing a little bit of research on that. And so, Board, I'll ask at this time, thoughts, comments about what we've seen with what's being proposed?
Mr. Supervisor, real quick, I think this is a perfect example of a good compromise. The owner and the town staff, and then the neighbor have come together and come for a solution that works for everybody. I'm able to look at the pictures and very impressed with how these flowers bloom as far as what Mary was saying, kind of a bush feel, offering a very good buffer, especially when it grows to be five or six feet. And quite honestly, it has some vibrant color to it. So I think it's going to be very attractive at the end of the day, and not just, you know, a plain-looking bush per se. So I think this is a great example of a compromise. I certainly support this moving forward, and would like to thank everybody for coming together and working together to come up with this solution for an attractive buffer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Other comments, Board members? Linda, please.
Well, I was curious, we were going to have Bruce Sorewski, our landscape architect, I think you have a conversation too with Mary Nguyen's landscape architect. Did they ever talk, or did you ever talk to them, see if they think this is a good planting to put there?
So they weren't, they weren't able to connect, I think, just because of how busy schedules are. And I know that, you know, Jim has in the past been in contact with Bruce, and I think everyone agrees that this is a good compromise. Linda?
Okay. I understand what Jim said, but I thought, I thought that was that he didn't go out there and take a look, but maybe, maybe after this was discussed, somebody ran it by them to see if they were okay with it, the different landscape architects. I mean, I think it sounds a good idea, but, you know, I just wanted to make sure that they were in the loop.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. Okay. Other, other comments? Debbie?
Mr. Supervisor, a question for, Mark, would you put, or can you put the picture of the swing set, the property, right up again? I just wanted to ask you if you could exactly, with your little pointer, is that, can you go and just tell me, show me, is that, I think I know where it is, but the berm, is that the berm when you're running across, right? Is it right across the screen, correct? Right back?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the fence on the back.
That's what I thought, the entire, and it actually comes a little bit farther over too, as well, right?
It's 135 feet long.
Right. I just thought that's where, I just wanted to make sure that that was a...
It's pretty long.
It goes to beyond the garage.
I'm just going with that line.
Thank you, Deb. All right, other, other thoughts or comments?
Sounds good.
All right.
Supervisor, I, after the last meeting, took a quick ride by just so I could have a better appreciation for the berm and its relation to the neighbors in the back. So seeing the pictures tonight and the berm itself, I think that's a, it's a good fit.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Ockenden. Thank you. All right, I would, if the board is in agreement, I might ask for consideration of a motion and second for this latest proposal, latest plan for the landscaping. I'll move.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilwoman Cole. I'll ask at this point, Board, any additional comments or questions that anyone might have? I'll ask Mary, do you have any additional comments that we haven't already heard that you would like to add to the record?
Just for, to set, to set expectations, they, I'm going to order them tomorrow, then. They will not be in for two weeks because I've asked for larger plants, so they have to order them from the, I guess, the nursery they get the larger plants from. And then, they're going to come right into Rochester, so once they come in, we'll pick them up and we'll start planting them.
Okay, great.
Maybe by the end of July, they'll be in.
Okay. That sounds good, thank you. All right, and then I'll just ask staff, any additional comments that we haven't heard this evening or at previous work session that we should add to the record on this particular matter?
No, I think we've, we've covered everything. I think this is the second-last thing Mary has to do to comply with all the site plan requirements. The last thing that she's waiting for is to get her contractor in to pave the property, pave the parking area. Other than that, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, great. Excellent. Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
All right. Thank you very much, Mary. We appreciate coming back with information. I know this is going to be a bit of a surprise when I say this, but I'll wish you a happy Fourth of July, which happens to be next week. It just kind of dawned on me that it, I don't know where the time has gone, but to you and your family, be well and be safe.
Thank you, you too.
All right, thank you.
Bye.
All right, we will move on to 1738 Penfield Road, request for a conditional use permit. And Mr. Costello, if you would update us, we did have a public hearing last week, and I think we may have Taylor possibly on the line, or listening in via Zoom, and we'll...
Yes, I can hear.
Okay, there we go. And now we see you too. All right. Taylor, welcome, welcome. All right, so I'm going to ask at this point, Mr. Costello, if he might give us a quick update, and then, Taylor, you'll have an opportunity for any additional questions or comments that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Yes, we had our public hearing on the 17th. Taylor indicated that she had, she was the property owner. The property previously was approved by this board, I think on May 20th, for a hair salon within the former residence. She would like to take her business out of the residence, which was there for five years, and now incorporate it into the garage, which is a 24-by-30 structure. She's asking for approval for an addition of 12 by 12 square feet to add for a potential second esthetician at some point in the future. She and the second one would probably be the only ones working on the site. She indicated that she could comply with all time restraints for the four corners district. They are going to be installing a second area for, a new parking area on the property. We indicated that she had to meet with the town engineer and staff to make sure that there's proper drainage associated with that, and she agreed to do that. We talked a little bit about her sign. There's an existing sign when she was a customary home occupation on the site. She is going to utilize the exact same dimensions of that sign to share with both she and the hair salon operator, Sarah Olajarsik. And that being the case, we put some other conditions on, associated with things like refuse hauling, picking up between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, and not before or after. Those are pretty much the highlights associated with the project. Unless Sarah, unless Taylor has other things she wants to share.
Okay. Great. Sarah, any addition, excuse me. He put, he put Sarah in my head, so I apologize.
I did. And I apologize as well.
Taylor, I apologize. Taylor, is there any additional comments that, that you would like to make that you didn't make at the public hearing, or you believe is pertinent to the application?
What did you just, what did you say last?
Anything else that is pertinent to this application?
Oh, no.
Okay, very good, thank you. I'll ask the board, any questions for Mr. Costello or for the applicant, Taylor, and regarding this proposal? Okay.
If I, Mr. Supervisor, if I could ask Taylor, when is your intent to actually do the improvements to the driveway and the parking area?
Um, I think what we originally wanted to do was expand the pavement, but I think because it was like $40,000, we're looking into stone for now, because we own, I think it's like an acre behind it, so we can expand behind.
Stone's probably a good idea initially, just if nothing else, for drainage purposes, and secondly, it'll give you a chance to compact the stone so that when you go to pave, it'll be a good base for the...
Yeah, that's what, that's what they said.
Yeah, all right. So we still need to see that, though, so we need to work with the town engineer to come up with the plans to what you're going to do and when you're going to do it.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
I'll call you separately for that.
Very good.
So I'll ask Board, any additional questions for Taylor? Okay, would entertain a motion on this particular application from the board?
I move that this, this application for conditional permit be approved.
Second, Deb.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Cole, seconded by Councilwoman Draw. Seeing no further conversation, before I call the roll, roll call on this vote, I'll just remind Taylor, please stay in contact with Mr. Costello. He'll coordinate any discussions you need to have with the town engineer. He highlighted those things that we had discussed regarding the sign. I know it's an existing sign, but from a signage standpoint. And then, obviously, before any building is done, making sure that you got the proper permits in place. And then, from there, best wishes on the new endeavor, or expanded endeavor. All right.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
All right, Taylor, congratulations.
Thank you.
We're glad you're part of the Penfield family, and good luck on the business as you move forward.
Thank you so much.
All right, and you be well and be safe.
You too.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Item D. Item D is the town clerk's request to opt out of DEC licensing sales. And before we go on and have any further discussion, I did send to the board a letter or an email that came in from a resident that, and I'll read, I'll read that, Mr. Ralph Rolofsky. And he says, "I understand that the Town Board will be considering a request to no longer sell hunting and fishing licenses. I'm a lifelong Penfield resident and have been purchasing a sportsman's license for as long as I can remember. This is a service to the community that would be greatly missed, especially by older sportsmen and women, for whom going online can be very intimidating and very stressful. I'm also a landowner, and the additional steps we have, we are required to complete as part of the application process is a hassle that makes me grateful for the option of purchasing my license in person. Please don't take this choice away." So I wanted to make sure that that was part of the record, Board. I know you, I did send that to you, but I wanted to make sure that that was part of the record as well. So with that, I'll ask for further discussion by the board at this time.
Mr. Supervisor, I've just got a couple of comments, and, you know, I think that that resident kind of summed it up pretty well, and it's about choice. And, you know, certainly, I realize that the hunting licenses, fishing and hunting licenses are not abundant as far as people coming to the town hall and getting them. It does happen, but it does provide a level of choice and an option for residents to come here and to take care of that transaction. So certainly respect the fact that those that are savvy could do it online through state DOC, State Department of Environmental Conservation website, or maybe go to a local sporting store, or a store that has fishing and hunting offerings as far as product goes. So I do look at it as a choice and an option for residents, and so we're thinking about that over the last week. I'm going to be inclined to vote for the town clerk to keep that option available for Penfield residents. Thank you.
Okay. Other, other comments?
Mr. Supervisor, I'd just like to say, I've talked to a couple of residents about, specifically about this issue. I agree with what Councilwoman Moore has said, and I also think, you know, I also don't agree, I don't want to take any services away to our residents that we're currently doing, this being one of them, and I think is, you know, that was, that resident really did sum it up, and I think that as long as... And I think that as long as, that we can give them people a choice, but I definitely, I'm not in favor of taking any services, specifically the, this DEC hunting and license away from, I mean, that the residents can, that any resident can get this right at the, at the town hall.
Okay.
I concur. I think it's, when it's a service that's being provided, and there's really not a good reason not to provide it. Just because there's not that many people applying for it doesn't mean there isn't someone applying for it. Obviously, this man that wrote the letter. So I'm in favor of keeping, keeping the service at the town hall.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to, I'm going to throw in one small twist on this. I think the Board did also receive a letter from the town clerk that had indicated to have the Board consider EZ Pass. And I know, I know that this is not specifically identified on the agenda, but I think it's in keeping with a broader discussion and wanted to see where the Board might be as part of that particular service out of the town clerk, clerk's office.
I'll, I'll jump in. I, I think it's a great idea, and I compliment Mrs. Steckloff, Town Clerk, in looking at making that offering for EZ Pass here at the Town Hall. Certainly in my conversations with Councilman Ockden a couple of days ago, we talked about that potential. I know that he was a strong advocate of having the EZ Pass available for Penfield residents, kind of in the same lines that I mentioned before about having that choice and that option for Penfield residents to come to the Town Hall and get that service. So I'd like to thank Town Clerk Amy Steckloff and her staff for looking into that and trying to make that an offering out of the clerk's office. And I'd like to thank Councilman Ockden for his strong support when I talked to him about that particular issue a couple of days ago. So I would, I would support the Town Clerk's Office having EZ Pass available for Penfield residents.
Mr. Supervisor, thank you, Councilman Moore. I too want to just, just reiterate, you know, you travel the thruway, you see how many cars are actually stacked up at the non EZ Pass lanes. It's kind of surprising. I just thought everybody had it. But I think over time, that's going to become more the norm, and I think it's something that if we provide it here locally, will be a true benefit to our residents. So I think, I think it's a good thing, and I'll support that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, and if I recall, here within the last month or so, I think the goal by the state, by the governor and by the state, is that to have basically, try to have everyone or most everyone have an EZ Pass so that they can help reduce some cost. Now whether costs are reduced or not will remain to be seen, but certainly, an EZ Pass makes that trip a little bit, a little bit better, a little easier. Okay, so we're going to do, I want to make sure that as we go through here, we capture everything properly for the minutes and, and for the record. So the first, the first item is to talk about the opt-out DEC licensing. And so normally, an aye vote would be to support it. And so if you vote aye, it would be supporting opt-out. In this particular case, if you don't want to opt-out, the vote is a no vote. And so I want to make sure that that's clear to everyone here in our viewing audience and as well as all of, all of us here in the Board. So I would, I would entertain a motion, from what I'm hearing from the Board, entertain a motion not to opt-out of our licensing sales for sportsmen, hunting and fishing.
Mr. Supervisor, I would make a motion, please, that I would like us not to, not to opt-out of our DEC sportsman license.
All right, thank you.
Second, Deb.
Thank you. So it's been moved by Councilwoman Draw, seconded by Councilwoman Cole. And the vote that I'm going to ask for a roll call vote again, if you want to opt-out, then aye, and if you don't want to opt-out, that's a no. So I'll ask for a roll call vote, please, at this time.
Draw?
No.
Cole?
No.
LaFountain?
No.
Moore?
No.
Ockden?
No.
Bye, no.
Okay. And so I would next ask for a motion and a second for us to offer EZ Pass in the town clerk's office. So again, the town clerk has that as a, as a formal authorization by this Board to provide that service. And would entertain a motion of approval to offer EZ Pass and.
Mr. Supervisor, I'll make the motion that the town clerk's office provides a sale of New York State EZ Pass.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ockden, seconded by Councilman Moore. And this is to offer EZ Pass within the town clerk's office for our residents. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockden?
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Okay. That makes sure that we have the record straight and, and accurate. All right. Seeing no further business to come before the Town Board this evening at our work session, the June 24, 2020 work session will stand adjourned at 7:38 p.m. I'd like to thank everyone that participated this evening. I'd like to recognize our team downstairs that helps us through our technology, not only here in the boardroom, but at home and then to everyone else's home. Thank you for that. And we look forward to next, seeing you at a legislative session next Wednesday, July 1st. Thank you very much, everyone. Be well and be safe.